Yeah.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
I just have one more clip.
Call me Thursday, February 25th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Okay, Minister received the file. Commissioner's Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
Well, this had a fundraiser for Special Olympics. John, hope you all did well with that, but there's another one tonight at Culvers that Zach Paul is working on. Actually, it's from 10:30 to 10 o'clock tonight at Culvers. So if you didn't make it out there to donate to John, you can go out to Culvers today. And then Friday, Taos Nights at Columbus Fish Fry, OSH Bend Fish Fry. I think there's probably some here in town, too. I'm not sure where all that is.
Cathedral has one, and then Nights Columbus over in Tanner Bridge has one.
Yeah, I think they have one every Friday, right?
Cathedral skips one Friday, but...
That's about it then, I think.
So there's a IRPT Missouri River Basin meeting, social, tonight. You guys are all invited. The Heartland Port Authority was a sponsor for that, and that's at Doubletree. That's at seven. Coal County Courthouse Progress Meeting tomorrow, here in the chambers at nine. Have an RPC Executive Board Meeting tomorrow at 11:30 in Ashland. Bridge Advisory Meeting at Public Works at eight o'clock Thursday. Inspection of Law Enforcement Roof is Friday at 11. And then Monday, have our monthly in-house DevNet Meeting, and they're gonna supposedly be doing a demonstration, but I'm not optimistic about that. And then there's a Jeff City Airport Advisory Meeting Monday at 10:30 at City Hall. That's all.
I have, tomorrow I have a census meeting at 10:30. Thursday, we've got the bid opening for the coins, so I think some of us will be here. Friday, leadership forum. And Bill Farr's last day. And then Monday, I've got a USS Missouri meeting with Lieutenant, others from Hawaii. So that's all I've got.
So the leadership meeting's Friday?
Uh-huh. Yep.
You're the only one getting invited to that, I guess?
I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll check.
Well, you didn't vote against him, so...
Okay.
Lee, the Chamber Leadership Meeting Monday? What do you say?
Friday.
This Friday? Okay. What time was that?
Seven thirty.
At the Chamber?
No, that's not right, please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's not that one.
Okay.
Okay. So the bids and contracts, we're gonna table, okay, this whole, okay, we're not doing that. Signing the 2020-2021 Assessment Maintenance Plan.
I was asked to put that on there from Jackie, and I told her we hadn't received it yet, so... Have you guys seen a copy of that?
I haven't.
She got that, he had emails, he got it, and I was like, well, I would like Jill and us to review that, too, before you guys...
Yeah, we'll take it.
Two years ago, we had some issues with it.
Okay.
So I would assume they're not gonna show up for it, too.
Okay.
Let's contact them, let them know that we'll put it back on agenda for next week.
Okay.
And it tells the state tax.
Okay, discussion signing of strategic capital consulting agreement.
Oh, we're gonna tape.
I'll tape it.
No, we got that, no, we got that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is for, this is just part of the economic development. This is just strategics part, we're just kinda splitting that up. So strategic's gonna have a contract with us, and this is for our lobbying, so you guys... You wanna see this? Have you seen this?
It's gonna be the same split as before.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is just to take care of their...
It's just kinda separating it.
Okay.
Separating them and Victor.
That's what was attached to the agenda, right?
Good.
I think a lobby, yeah, I think that's been working.
Yep. I move that we approve the strategic capital consulting contract. And sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
City-County Emergency Medical Services Agreement.
Morning, gentlemen. So this is the annual agreement that we have with the city and the county. We made some changes to it. The big things are just kinda how we've taken the emergency driving provision, that we had two separate MOUs, and put them together into the one document. Kind of outlined the medical resupply, how we'll on-scene, if the patient condition allows, if not after the fact, we'll give them any, give them back any disposable medical equipment that they would use on the patient, stuff like that. And then it has the $25,000 payment to them for the assistance.
You guys have time to review this? Yep.
Yes.
Good, Jeff?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the MOU between the County of Coal and the City of Jefferson for Emergency Medical Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Signing of Traveler's Defense Agreement.
I have three copies of Defense expense agreement. I guess that's where I understand that the state of Missouri insurance is asking travelers to have a sign-off that basically on our three policies, law enforcement, public officials liability, and employment law-related practices, insured knows that the defense is in with the ultimate claim that's made against the county. So we just need those three.
It's just an acknowledgement that insurance wants.
Division of Insurance is asking all the carriers to do that with any public entity. You can see at the bottom, it's Travelers policy.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
So there's just three copies?
There's three different, yes.
Three policies, right.
Three different policies.
They should be different things.
It's right in the middle, it just says which one each one is.
Am I missing something here? These look like they're the same.
Uh, one is...
Oh, okay, I see.
One's law enforcement, one's...
One's public entity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Maybe that we sign the acknowledgement for law enforcement liability coverage acknowledgement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we sign the acknowledgement for public entity management liability coverage.
Sorry, my chair fell.
At least you're not on the floor.
I hate this chair. Oh, you're gonna do each one separate?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we sign the acknowledgement for public entity employment-related practices liability coverage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we're moving right along. MOU with Coal County First Responders.
Morning, gentlemen. This is very similar to the MOU with Jeff City Fire. The differences in this one is, is that it does, because Dr. Ludi does his medical direction as a service to them, it doesn't require that $1,000 payment to them. It does put in an emergency driving provision, so the same training that Jeff City would go through, if the first responders wanted to drive, they would have to go through it as well to, in order to do that. And then the other thing is, is because they're an independent contractor with that requiring copies of their insurance to make sure that that's enforced, so that it helps limit the county's liability. So those are the provisions in here. You give them a copy to sign.
Okay.
Guys, good?
Uh-huh.
I move that we sign the MOU between the County of Coal and the Coal County Volunteer Medical First Responder Squad Emergency Medical Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry. And say, look, no bomb threats or anything.
It's early, so...
Actually, I shouldn't say that. Okay. Bid awards, 2020-08 Coal Milling and Asphalt Paving Services.
For 2020-08, we received two bids in from Jefferson Asphalt and Higgins Asphalt, and we are recommending to go in with the lowest bidder with availability of materials.
Did you send those by email?
Yeah, yesterday.
I did, I made copies, though.
No, I got the email now. I thought they were attached to the agenda, so...
Guys, good?
Yeah.
I move that we award the coal milling and asphalt paving services to lowest and best with availability.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
2020-09 Sign Materials.
We received multiple bids on the 2020-09 as well, and we're recommending to go with the lowest... Lowest and best price in each category.
With availability, or...
Yeah.
Guys, good?
Yeah.
I move that we award signed materials to the lowest and best with availability in each category.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2020-10 Asphalt Materials.
For 2020-10, we received multiple bids on this one as well, and we are recommending to award it to the lowest bidder in each category with availability.
Closest to the project, too, I imagine?
Most, um, as you see, their prices are pretty much the same, pretty close anyway. A lot of times, we just, wherever we, whichever one of them got the plant making next week can use for the day is a lot of it. Because sometimes they're making grade D, and sometimes they're making black base, and if we need grade D, then we can, we can go to either one of them, be picking up if we need to.
Okay.
Maybe that we award asphalt materials to the lowest and best with availability closest to the job site.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any unfinished questions? Okay, I'm gonna move accounts payable down to the end, and I think I'm gonna actually move Locke Thompson up, if you don't mind, just because he's got things to do. The VAWA grant award acceptance.
And I'll pretty much let Ms. Lesh go into some detail on that, just because she's the one who's been kind of running point on that for the office.
Thank you. Which you all should have received a copy of the sub-award previously. And originally, we asked for 75% of my entire salary, including benefits, bonus, benefits, everything. And that came out for a two-year contract to around $114,000. That was rejected by VAWA, but they gave us a percentage of that, and that is $85,762.35. That would be for a two-year contract, and that is 75% of my salary for those two years, plus a few other benefits. But again, this would require the prosecutor's office to keep from supplanting funds, federal funds for state funds. We would have to bring in a new employee. So the hope would be, under this grant, you could bring in that new employee at a lower salary, which would hopefully get you as close to even as possible. Again, you would have to provide costs for those other benefits, retirement benefits, health insurance, things like that. I do have a copy with me. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
That eighty, is it eighty?
It's 85,762.
That 85 would cover the vast majority of a salary for a new entry-level assistant prosecutor for a two-year period.
And again, the reason why we have to bring that new employee in is for two reasons. To keep from supplanting, but also the promise we made is that one prosecutor, myself, would entirely focus upon domestic violence cases. That would bring additional responsibilities on my shoulders. We've promised to provide training to law enforcement. We actually already have that training set up with the Sheriff's Department in March, as well as doing other things of that nature.
I think it's, it's still very inexpensive to have another attorney, and it's just for the two years, and so if that money, when that money's gone, the positions, well, you'll apply again.
Exactly. And my, my plan for applying, so my, my approach to applying this year was to kind of ask for everything regarding my salary benefits, so I kind of, you know, shotgun approach, if you will. But I also left a few areas on the table, such as travel costs. So my plan would be, in two years, to do the same approach, apply for everything regarding my salary in addition to asking for those travel expenses. With kind of the anticipation that they would likely say no to the full thing, but again, hopefully would come close to, you know, 75% of my full salary, plus some other benefits. And we can always change and modify that if we want to apply for two assistants, but that would be my goal two years down the road.
Approximately, what is gonna be the additional cost as law?
So the entry-level salary for an assistant prosecutor starts at 50. Obviously, that 85 split over two years would get you pretty close on the salary, so it would be a makeup of about six, seven a year plus benefits. So, and again, as, as I mentioned before, our office, the caseload per assistant prosecutor is one of the higher ones around the state. Eventually, obviously, as the, as the county continues to grow, the amount of crimes, maybe the crime rate wouldn't necessarily increase, but the amount of crime, assuming it stays the same, the number of cases will continue to go up. That is going to eventually require us to add another assistant prosecutor position, probably sooner than later, and I think we might as well try and take advantage of this opportunity we have to add that position at a significantly lower cost.
So I guess one of the things that I'm a little confused at is that, so we applied for the grant to cover Mrs. Lesh's position, but now we're talking about using the grant to hire another position.
Correct, because technically, and Ms. Lesh can go a little more into it, but you cannot use that funding to supplant salary that already exists.
Right. And I, in my application, I make that very clear to the state that I was applying specifically to cover my salary. I have experience in domestic violence. I've received recognition when I was working in Kansas City for domestic violence. So basically, it doesn't make sense to use these funds to cover a new position when you have someone with experience and training in this specific area. The other reason I did that is because my salary would most likely be higher than a new position that we created. So by asking for 75% of my, and it will go specifically to my position, but essentially, that would free up 75% of my salary for you all to use to another person. Which, again, to be very clear, that absolutely would have to happen under this grant. They would want notification as soon as we fill that position. But it's essentially pay 75% of my salary in order to free up salary for the county to hire that new person. And I, I think the need is clear in our office. I think the, the state also recognized that, but, you know, it has to make sense for us as a county as well.
So the entry-level salary is $50,000. What's, what's the benefits on top of that? $20,000, over, per year, or?
Yes, a year.
Per year. So we're at 140 over two years, so our cost is roughly $55,000 over two years.
Plus the 20%, so, yeah.
What's 20%?
Uh, it only covers 8%.
It covers 75%. And again, we, we asked for 75% of everything for me.
Right. But the total award was 85,000 over two years, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, correct.
I was just looking at the two-year total. So we'd be looking at about $27,000 a year that we'd have to cover.
Twenty-seven, is that what you're counting on?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay.
Per year. Assuming we can hire somebody at 50.
Correct.
Right. Well, and, and with, you know, law school graduation coming up in May, there will be graduating law students looking for positions. I don't see, I mean, it might take a little bit of time, but I don't see a huge issue in finding someone to bring in.
When does this grant start?
So technically, it started in January, but it can, it goes from 2020 to 2021, covers those two years. And I will tell you, I've applied for this grant, this is my third time applying. They have never waited this long to let us know the funding opportunity, so I would be asking them, how do I, how do we backtrack to make sure if, you know, if we do want to go forward, that we don't miss the months of January and February in that funding opportunity?
And I will say that I'm, I'm supportive of this, but I, but I know what else is coming, too. And, you know, I know there's a shortage in the public defender's office, and, and so I know the judges are gonna be coming and asking us for that, and so...
Well, and I will say, Chris, not to cut you off at all, but, you know, I've spoken with Judge Beadham at some length about this stuff, and, and he's, he's said, you know, your office is doing pretty much everything they can do at this point, getting discovery out quickly, making reasonable offers on, on the cases. The only thing we can do, from my office's perspective, to move things along faster, is to lessen the caseload among my assistants. I think I mentioned last time, I've got at least a couple of assistants who have close to 1,100 cases on their personal dockets. And, you know, you contrast that with a public defender who might have 100 to 120 cases, something of that nature. Again, I understand that handling cases from the defense standpoint is an awful lot different from handling it prosecution-wise, but again, you're talking about like a 10-to-1 ratio, as far as that goes. And, and I think that especially on some of the misdemeanors, lower-level felonies, traffic-type stuff, you could see those things starting to move faster if we are able to add this position. Just because we'll have, we'll be able to, you know, cut the, cut down those dockets, spread it around the cases a little more, and get offers and discovery out faster in some of those things.
And so just to finish my thought there is, I mean...
Sure, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. I mean, I think all these things are great ideas, but they keep coming back to the kitty, and I'll call the kitty the GR, and so that's, you know, that's the struggles that we have. And so as we look forward and go through this budget and get into next year, you know, we, we have been able to take care of our employees, but if we keep straining GR, that's, that's where the cuts are gonna be made. The raises are gonna go away, and so, I mean, I, I think this is a good opportunity, but I just want everybody to be aware that you can't keep coming back to GR and just draining the pot, 'cause some, some point, the well runs out. So...
So when we were applying for this one, were we going to be hired in the APA anyway?
Correct.
Or is this gonna be costing us a little less?
Correct, yeah. The hope was, if they gave...
So what was it gonna be costing us at that one? Right now, we're looking at additional 27 per year?
So to hire a, hire a full-time, brand-new APA minus the grant...
It's gonna be the 50-plus.
Would have been the 50-plus benefits, yeah.
Yeah.
And you had come and talked to us at the end of the year, Lesh?
Correct.
About it, when you were applying, so...
Right.
You know, it was kind of a what-if, you get the grant?
Right.
Now you've got the grant, so...
Well, and we, we talked about everything, right? They could say yes to it all, they could say no to it all, or give us this middle number, which was what I anticipated, and that's, that's exactly what they did, so...
But we didn't budget for it, is that right?
No.
Yeah.
No, because it was a what-if.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, again, is really unfortunate. They've never waited this long to tell us if we are receiving an award and how much.
I still think the opportunity to get another attorney for $26,000, $27,000 is, is good.
And I will point out again, as I mentioned to you guys before, you know, now that we are handling those DOR tax cases, we do anticipate additional revenue coming into both the prosecutor's office and the county. How much that will be remains to be seen, but I believe it should more than cover the cost of what it's going to be to add this new position that would go back into general revenue. Because it's 10 cents to the dollar to the prosecutor's office, sorry, 10 cents on the dollar to the prosecutor's office, 10 cents to general revenue.
Any more thoughts, Jeff?
I think I'm fine with it. I was just, when we talked about it, we, we had a cost that was gonna be involved with it, but we didn't actually put anything in the budget, which we probably should have put something in the budget.
Right.
Said, here's what we're gonna put towards it, and if it comes back more or less, then we'll deal with it.
Right.
So, I don't know, that's one of the things we can look at doing in the future. I mean, you wanna make sure they have access to the resources that they need for this stuff, so...
So do we have a copy of the grant award, or Jill, review that, or? Is this a contract here, Locke, or?
Correct.
Yes.
I move that we sign the VAWA grant award contract with Missouri Department of Public Safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Just one last thing. We previously, back in November, signed the Certificate of Assurances. At that point, we did not know the contract number, so I'm just going to fill that in after I receive that document back. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we already sign that, I guess, or did we already sign that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That was if this happens, then.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, signing the surplus titles.
There's three vehicles here that the sheriff would like to send to auction on, please.
Any questions on these? I move that we sign the three surplus titles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Crisis Counseling Via Show Me Hope, sorry about that.
Commissioners, it's my understanding this isn't something that's typically brought forward to you guys or before you, because I don't have anything for you to sign. When I started at the EMA office, we had just recently... When I started at the EMA office, we had just recently lost Pam, and it hit a lot of our first responders very hard. What they did is they contacted Missouri Highway Patrol to get a crisis counselor to come in and, and put on quite a small seminar, whichever. I had since then spoken to Deputy Chief Boils and Commissioner Shephardley just a handful of times in regards to trying to find a grant to where we could get a localized team in the event that something like that happened again. I found a grant, a very thick grant. Then I met Champ Thompson right here. And come to find out, the grant that I was gonna apply for our county was the exact same grant that he got in order to support his program through Compass Health. So in addition to us losing Pam and just recently losing Galen, now is the time that we absolutely need to get a crisis management or incident team in place. And he can do it for our county for absolutely nothing. So if you don't mind, I'd like to have him go ahead and explain a little bit about his program.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. I'm Chaplain Thompson, Laird Thompson. I'm a retired Army Chaplain of 26 years. Just before I start, I, I want to just give honor to Bill Farr and thank him for his 45 years of public service and life. I am a team leader of a disaster relief team funded by FEMA, managed by Department of Mental Health, and administered by Compass Health, a grant funding. Our, we're tasked by the, by the federal government to come into counties that were declared presidential disaster areas and provide additional mental health resource to the counties. We've gone door-to-door along with tornado path and as well as other counties. We have four counties I'm responsible for. I have a team of six crisis counselors. And what we do is we offer five free counseling's in people's homes versus going to a, you know, a, a mental health clinic. One of our primary tasks is to support first responders and secondary caregiver, co-ads or community organizations assisting in the disaster. During my process, I met Bill Farr and I had, had a conversation in his office just about what was going on. And the tornado events is an added stressor to our first responders. They deal with every day, trauma, death, injury, pain, suffering. And what I'm presenting to the emergency first responders is to do a self-care training, two hours of self-care. As an Army Chaplain, if your soldiers were not taken well care of and they're emotionally strong, then they cannot do their mission. They begin to break down. You begin to have rates of, of DUIs and domestic violence and so on, health problems. And so what I'm proposing is that you take care of your first responders. Here, when I met Bill back in November, October, there were two accidents, three adult deaths and seven children in a matter of a week. And your first responders, the, the longer they do this, it builds up the compassion fatigue. It builds up the toxicity of the environment that they're in. And so through some self-care activities, some things that I can help train them, teach them, you're gonna show your first responders that you care for them, that you love them, and that this is important. When, when bad events like suicides would happen or deaths would happen in military, the commanding general would stop everything and do a safety stand-down day. And I, what I'm proposing is that you do somewhat of a stop everything and do some self-care training for two hours. We're looking at doing this four different times to help with the shift work, breakfast, lunch, breakfast, lunch. I'll make myself available any time of the day. I'll do it at midnight if I have to, if that works for the schedules of the first responders. I appreciate all the public service in this room, and I really appreciate the sacrifice and the service of our first responders at all levels. And I want to support you and their work that we do to take care of our citizens of Missouri. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you today. I've given you a bag, a copy of what I would give to all our first responders. And some of the bags that I've given out didn't have all the packets. I didn't realize how many people we're gonna have here today. So about 10 of you have the packets of material. I would focus on some self-care as well as some grief processing and some mindfulness training. And we'd have a meal, a breakfast, lunch type, type event, get that sponsored, and then have about an hour and 30 minutes of trained or a program training. So that's, that's what I'm presenting.
And there's no costs? This is?
And I can schedule it. I can run all the paperwork. I can make all the contacts. I can reach out. I just basically wanted your guys to buy it.
So we had talked and obviously I think this is a, a good thing for our first responders. So are we gonna include fire and law enforcement? I mean, so when you say first responders, I mean, it seems like it's a smaller group. And I just want to make sure that we're encompassing everybody. And then also when we had talked, talked about almost having a, a team. And so do you already have a team? Or are you gonna try to utilize some people that are in our community to form a local team to go into other communities and help?
Yes, sir. So I would pull together a team for the different events. We'd have some professional counselors on, on hand to assist with that. And yeah, this is something that we're gonna be exporting to other counties as well. I'm, I'm responsible for four counties, Cole, Miller, Osage, Pulaski, but there's 50 other eight counties in the state of Missouri, but I'm just responsible for four.
I think that's great. Now, we had a 19-year-old sailor who committed suicide right three days before the USS Missouri deployed. And suicide is.
Yeah.
It's getting more prevalent.
This, this type of training will help reduce the amount of PTSD that can develop. After 26 years of being a chaplain, when I retired, developed some PTSD. In our first responder deal, it happens every day. So you gotta stuff it down and move on to the next one. When I retired, some of that junk came up. So I, I, I am passionate about this to help our first responders not develop PTSD. Everyone's gonna have some post-traumatic stress response, but keep it from developing into an actual disorder affecting your life and function. So this is preventative.
I think it's great. So.
Do you do a training for the, the leadership positions too, so they can recognize people that are stressed out before they hit that?
Right.
Mark spot?
Haven't looked at that yet, but in terms of, we would have resources there to help plug people in that we identified during the training that need that follow-on care. So we'll definitely, that's who we're looking for.
Cause I think a lot of times it's hard to recognize until it's too late.
There are programs out there that would teach senior leadership how to respond, but that's where you run into an issue. Because let's just say, for instance, there was an issue or an incident that happened within the sheriff's office. You don't really want somebody from the sheriff's office running a seminar because they're not gonna respond as if they were to say if Chap was running it or somebody they didn't really know, somebody they didn't feel like they were gonna be judged. Not necessarily gonna get judged, but if somebody you don't really know, then you're more apt to be open rather than somebody you have to work with every day. So there are programs out there that are free as well that will train senior leadership. And it could be that we have somebody within the sheriff's department who responds to EMS, the fire, whatever. But right now, that's not.
I think it's wonderful.
We're good?
Yep. No, we appreciate it. Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You helping us. Thank you.
I might add something Commissioners. You know, we've done a lot in our community to help rebuild a lot of the lives, you know, with our long-term recovery, short-term recovery, food, daily necessity. A program like this is what's important. Now somebody moved into a new home or new apartment, they still have that in their mind, what happened after family went through. So Chap and his folks are great people to work with, all of our face-based communities. So I think it's a real good move to have that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Sheriff.
We are gonna be smiled for a while.
He needs lots of help.
He's already been trained. He can roll over and play dead and fetch and.
Sit in a building and freeze.
Okay, EMS emergency purchase. Come on, Matt. I see you out there.
So when we spoke on the phone, I believe it was Thursday or Friday, we thought we had secured some N95s due to the coronavirus. We were only able to secure a portion of what is required. So it's in, and it's almost impossible to find at this point. So I'm kinda, this, the idea is, is to give you guys a heads up. We thought we had secured omens that was gonna go over 6,000 based on, you know, the vendor. But he called back and said he wasn't able to, to, to get half the order filled. So the idea is, is that when I find them, I'm gonna need to make that purchase immediately to secure that protective equipment for our staff and for the staffs of the fire departments and all the first responders in the county. So the idea was, is initially to come up and let you know what was purchased. But at this point, we just got told that we only got half of it. So chances are, I just need, I don't know if it's possible to kind of get blanket approval. If I can secure these, go ahead and get them done, purchased, and then come back and brief, brief you guys in public session of what we purchased. But the N95s, basically from the suppliers that we've been told is, is most of them are made in China. And then when they, when the coronavirus kicked off and stuff, they turned their ships around and took it all back because the government said they needed it over there. So we're in a bit of a pickle, but we're working through it.
I kind of wondered when you said you found them. Cause I said, boy, there's a, there's a shortage of those. It's, it's.
We've reached out to almost 100 different suppliers and we, Saturday, I believe it was, I luckily found 40 boxes of smalls and 40 boxes of large. That's it. So we're diligently looking.
Do you have masks for, for our personnel on ambulance? Say if we, I mean, you know, it's, it's spreading. South Korea is.
So we have, we have enough to get us through a very small initial push should it become an issue. After that, we're gonna need to start looking at, and one of the things we're gonna have to look at is, is changing up. Instead of using a true just N95 surgical mask, going to either an APR or a full-face mask. That's gonna get expensive, but if that's what it comes down to, I'm gonna need to do that. We've been working kind of in conjunction. We've had meetings just about every week with the other agencies trying to come up with this. But trying to find them. And we've even reached out to welding companies trying to see if they have them, because they'll use them too. And you might be able to get one or two masks, but getting any substantial quantity. The issue is, is that if you have, you can't use interchangeable masks, because every time you change mask companies, you have to refit everyone for that particular mask style. Because they have to, you know, it takes about 30 minutes to fit test somebody to that specific mask type. And so if we had different types within the system, so one of the things we're looking at is, is all right, Sheriff's Department, you're gonna have this style and we'll fit test you to this style. And then JCFD, you're gonna have this style and fit test them. The issue is, is we can't even get those at this point. So we've put in requests. We've been talking with the Department of Health and Human Services in the state, reached out to somebody at FEMA to see what they have as well. My understanding is the feds have not released their emergency stockpile at this point and don't plan to until it gets worse. So like I said, we're in a bit of a pickle, but we have a contingency, but it's an expensive contingency that we're trying to wait on if we can.
When you find them, get them.
Do you guys have any questions or is it okay for me to make that purchase if I find them?
Well, you know how to get ahold of us.
Okay.
We usually take your calls. So if you find them, I mean, I'm, we have to have them, be prepared. But if we can't find them, I mean, what's gonna happen? The federals, federal gonna have to release some. If you have a case right here, they're gonna have to release something. I know you're kind of grinning about that.
That's, that's wishful thinking, I think.
But they're gonna sit there with, and sit on their hands and do nothing? And does it become a pandemic?
Well, so they, they.
We might as well be over in China licking doorknocks. I mean, what the hell?
I think that isolated.
They're not gonna do anything, but they expect us to? Have less money, resources?
So unfortunately, because most of those things are made in China, that's kind of put the chain, the, the supply, supply chain in high demand and stress. In fact, there's very few that are made in the states. There's one in Texas that we reached out to, and they're not fulfilling any orders either, because they can't keep up. So like I said, we've got enough to get through a few, but.
I understand. I'm, I'm just frustrated with it that there's not more upper-level stuff being done to mitigate this. So, I don't know. I'm done with it. Just.
I understand.
You get them, call and.
Okay.
It's gonna be better than if something does happen and we gotta go to the other more expensive contingency.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
I mean, I'd say if he finds them, he ought to just buy them right then and there. So.
Yeah, cause if you wait, I mean.
I mean, if, if it spreads at all and he can find them, he needs the authority to purchase them immediately.
I'm working on a trip to Pearl Harbor in September for the 75th anniversary. And now the travel agents are saying, cause there's a, I think a, a couple from Japan who died in, in Hawaii. And so the travel agents are already saying, you know, it, it, it kind of throws a red flag up too. It's, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. So.
And then is there a dollar amount you want to prove it up to or an amount of masks? Or, cause if he gets them and he's on the phone with them and will they let you reserve them until you make a phone call and get everything okay?
So that's one of the issues we had before was is we lost the large or the medium size, because we needed to, you know, reach out and try to get approval to make that initial purchase. And by the time I got back with the sales rep, those had already been procured by another sales rep. So that's our only concern with that is going and making those purchases as quickly as possible.
Will 6,000 still covered or is it gonna, they gonna go up as, as with the shortage? I mean.
So with the initial order that we were going to make was about 7,000. And that was to, that was basically to get us through our calculation of about 10 patients. Because remember when, because of the fit testing, we have to fit test and throw a substantial amount. So every person we fit test may be fit tested on three different masks, and you can't reuse those. So then you throw those away. And then we have to, because you don't know who's on what truck on any given day, they all, you have to stock. Like so for a fire truck, we're putting five masks per size on there, because again, you don't know who's on that truck. Or our trucks, we're gonna put three masks of every size on there, because again, you don't know who's coming and going on those trucks. So once we get that, that quantity built up and ready to go, then, then it's just a sustainment piece. But we gotta get up to that quantity to have in reserve, because our fear is, is that if this kicks off, it's not gonna be a one or two-person event. It's going to spread quickly.
So I'm assuming, when you're talking on, is the fire department gonna be buying these too with the city? I mean, maybe we could do a joint.
So we're purchasing as part of the thing is because it's a disposable item, we're purchasing them for all the first responder agencies and then supplying them that way. That's why we're trying to get, A, because they're interchangeable. If something happens with one of our trucks or we run out of supply, we can pull from one of their trucks on a call. So we want that interchangeability or interoperability. So it's one of the reasons why we're trying very hard to stay with the same style mask throughout the entire county. And in order to do that, we have the purchasing power because of our suppliers and our, right, we, because of our volume and medical equipment or medical supplies we buy, we can generally get them cheaper than anyone else. And so we're trying to be good stewards with all of our responding, because at that point, they're assisting us because it's a medical call. And so we're, you know, I believe that's incumbent upon us to provide, help provide their safety.
So if we gave you like a figure of like $8,000, you could purchase them immediately?
I could, I could probably make that work. That doesn't cover the contingency plan if we have to execute that. But that I would come to you guys and at least get authorization. But for the N95s, I believe that we can do that.
So as we had spoke, the N95s are not available and you can't find them anywhere. And so the next best solution costs substantially more than.
Substantially.
Substantially more than $8,000. And so.
That's correct.
So at this point, if you can't find N95, you go to the next best thing. And then if you can't find that, you go to the next best thing and the cost keeps escalating.
That's correct.
And so it doesn't really matter. You have to have something. And so, you know, it's. What are you gonna do? I mean, if he needs them, he's gotta buy them. He's gotta have them now, and he's gotta have them here now.
Yeah.
And so.
So the way that the escalation that we would do it is, is we would go N95. If we can't procure them and have a need, then we'll go to what's called an APR, a very common. Very common way to look at it is like painters, when they're spraying, will wear those. Problem is, is those have two filters that you have to purchase so they get expensive that way, but they're cheaper on the initial out way. And then the last one would be a full face. And we've spoken with Jeff City Fire, and they've recommended a brand. We already have 21 of those brands, but we don't have the proper filters for them. And again, that 21, those 21 won't cover the staff. And so as we increase the different options, they start becoming substantially more expensive. I mean, when you're said and done, because you have to buy all the filters for, say, a full face, I mean, you're approaching $20,000.
Well, if you get your hands on something, I mean, I'm all right giving you authority to get them without having to call us through and having a chance of losing them. But I think we need to have some kind of limit on it, some kind of knowledge of what's going on with it. So have to be, hopefully hang up with it.
One of the things I could probably do is make the purchase and then immediately call you guys. And if you guys deny it, I can call back and try to cancel that purchase. Generally, they're not going to ship them immediately. So I should be able to cancel them within 30, 40 minutes.
If you were saying 7,000 originally, so if we would do $8,000, that should cover.
It should. And that's, of course, just based on the one, one company. If I find them across three or four different companies, then we don't approach that $6,000 limit of where we have to get approval prior to. So if, you know, our biggest concern is if we find them with one company, I just need to purchase through one company immediately. If I can find them through several different companies, then we don't, then it's just coming out of my normal medical budget like it would normally. So I'm happy to do it however you guys would like me to.
I don't want to lose them if we got an opportunity to get them. So probably need to give you authority to get them with not to exceed them, Al.
Okay.
And I don't care if we make it around a number of 10,000 and however we got to get it because the next ones may not be the same price. I don't know.
The biggest risk we'll run with that is if we can't find the ones we currently stock and we have to make a wholesale change. That's where the, that's where the cost will come in for the N-95s.
Well, before you make a wholesale change, I'd like to know.
Yes, sir.
Just, but if you find the 95s or whatever, I think I'm okay with getting those.
Up to 10,000.
Yeah.
Whatever.
If you wanted us, if 7,000 is going to get it, then just 7,000. You know what we're going to yell at you about or not?
I'm familiar.
I would move that we approve the emergency purchase of personal protective equipment to the lowest and best with availability up to $10,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Wait, I got more questions about this.
About what? Coronavirus?
I mean, what about other counties that don't have the resources that we do? What are they going to do?
So some of them had grants.
Mills County, Miller County.
So they got grants several years back. My understanding is from R-SOC and got some of them. Apparently what happened on our stock is some of them were expired and some other issues that we've discovered that we're working through as well. So, but there was some R-SOC grant money that they had originally gotten. I think it was two or three years ago is what I was told. And so it's a little.
Didn't we get R-SOC money?
So it was, it was actually LE-TPA money that gave us some of that money. And that was about 10 years ago. R-SOC released some to some of the counties for those that didn't have the PPC available to them. So they have been distributing funds for this for a long time. It is something that they've been thinking about ever since, remember the Ebola scare? Ever since that was going on, that's when this all started up. So.
Well, H1N1.
Yep. So it's progressing and we're doing really good. We're meeting, the LE-PC is meeting weekly and we're talking, everyone's talking about this. I have been talking to other counties as far as the LE-PC chair and as far as county sheriff. And I know that the health department, who's running lead on this, they have been talking and been in contact with SEMA on a daily basis. So we are doing the very best that we can right now. And I, I don't know if it matters, but I mean, that's a, that's a good decision on a 10 grand. That way you didn't have to wait. And I think just an email probably would be easier.
Yeah.
That way you know that they spend the money. But yeah, we're scrounging for items too. We have some full-face masks also. The filters are expired and, but they're not for this type of situation. We can use them, but it's not for this type of situation.
We were able to find surgical face masks. They don't protect us, but one of the CDC recommendations is that because it's a droplet, right, they cough, that every patient gets one if they have the symptoms through their screening questionnaires and stuff like that. We were able to purchase, I want to say 4,000 or 5,000 from state surplus that the feds had just put over there. And so we bought up, you know, 50 masks for a buck. And so we just went, so for, you know, roughly 500 bucks or whatever it was, we got, you know, 5,000 of these masks, which would normally cost us several thousands of dollars. So we're doing our best to keep the cost down. But N-95s, I mean, it's like a unicorn at this point.
I was just curious because I mean, we're doing all this, but then every day we have thousands of people come in to Cole County from every which other county. So, you know, hell, we're going to have to build a wall.
Well, just have the sheriff at the county line.
Sierra's been involved in all these conversations too, so so far, so.
Yeah, I know. It's been a great effort. I just, and chief gets tired of my questions.
I'm okay with you. You're in.
He accidentally buttoned on me the other day. I tried calling back, he wouldn't even answer.
And Sierra's very familiar with all the, Sierra's very familiar with all the R-SOC stuff too. She was doing that for the RPC. So, I mean, if there's money out there available, I mean, she'll, she'll know about it.
That money went to the health department. Did they go to the BMA or anyone?
And we looked, we already looked for grants. And obviously, everyone else in the country is looking for grants right now as well for it. And it's, they're just not available. So.
I'm glad that all the stuff that Matt and I have done, and they'll get in fact in 2014, the Ebola, I stockpiled probably close to 1,000, they call them white painter suits. So that's something we didn't have to purchase. We're a lot of people haven't looked for that. We already had them stocked.
And we have everything divvied up and ready to deploy, right? If we get an alert that somebody's under watch or an issue, we have them ready to push out for that. So we're prepared for an initial issue, if you will, you know, again, two, three patients, four patients. If it starts to go beyond that, that's where our issue is going to drastically come to play. So we're doing the best we can to mitigate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions about us. So I'm sure you all deal with it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to table the discussion of economic development.
Until next week.
Until next week.
Get that moved to next week, Debbie.
Okay. So now we will go to accounts payable review.
I have to approve of accounts payable review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else?
I'm going to go back to last week's meeting and, you know, we had the bomb threat and stuff. And, you know, we sat there, we had an hour and a half to get on the phone and either answer emails or Facebook or whatever you're wanting to do. But we don't really have protocol telling everybody, okay, here's where you go so we can make sure you're accounted for. Here's how we're going to let you know when you can come back. So I think we need to probably, maybe we do have protocols, we just didn't do a very good job following them.
Yeah, well, I agree. Because I mean, it is more as a empty the courthouse with the juror, with the juries and everything. It's kind of like we need to, we need, direct everybody to the, to the sheriff's department.
You do have protocols.
Okay.
Each individual, each individual officer has protocols on where they, where they ship their individuals. So.
Remember, we had done that flip chart.
Yeah.
The one that Jess had done.
Yeah.
No? Definitely.
You had just done one for the courthouse.
Just the courthouse, okay.
And you guys asked him to do one for this building and the rest of our buildings. To update them on, I'm sorry, Jess Hethcock?
Yeah, Jess Hethcock.
Yes. We.
It's good. It's Richard Lee and Donnie talking.
So I did ask Donnie after the bomb threat last week to ask Jesse where we are with that so we can get that updated because there's many employees that were asking a lot of questions. So I know we got an answer from Donnie as far as where he's at with it.
Well, yeah, we got a protocol, but do, you know, fire, tornado, whatever. But you said there's a bomb threat. I wasn't going to sit here and look for the damn thing.
No. No, we had, some people sat over at the restaurant here, some went down to coffee zones, some went down to high-rise bakery, some left and came back.
So, and that's a good point to bring up. So the upcoming state tornado drill, that would be an opportune time to put out to the different entities to go over what their procedures are in case there's a tornado warning. I mean, I think this is a good teachable moment for the county and for all, well, for everybody. I mean, we just got hit by tornadoes, so we know that it's not out of the question. So this would be a good time to have that teachable moment and talk to your, I don't know, your family, but the businesses and figure out what you're going to do, where you're going to be, all that, and make sure everybody understands what the plan is.
And I don't know if I overstepped my bounds or not, but I talked to Ms. Thomas about having that here, that we do have drills, you know, so.
No, I'm glad you talked about it too because I was just curious.
Well, and probably not only should we have evacuated this building and this building, we probably should have evacuated buildings across the street and wherever else. Because I mean, a bomb's going to be, I left, I got miles away.
Well, so the protocol is based on the credibility of the threat. So, I mean, we would have done, depending on the credibility of the threat and the evidence or the, what we know that's going on.
Right.
We would have done more or less. So it just depends upon the situation, any given circumstances.
Right.
I stood behind the sheriff because I figure, you know, the worst that can happen is if it, if it blows him up and he falls on me, then it could, but it, he's going to take most of the blast.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Just some last one, Matt, you want to?
What we do.
Look at, so you know where to go or who to meet, what, you know?
I think his big problem was he was having trouble with our buildings and getting blueprints of our buildings. So if you remember right on that side of that, it does show, you know, where our exit doors are and different blueprints of it. So we may need cooperation on getting some of that, or we may even have to have somebody help us do some sketches because, you know, Jesse was having trouble with that a few months ago.
My understanding was we had, we had some from the prosecutor who didn't leave or, and then we had, Richard was the last one. We got to get a hover for Richard. He was the last one to get out of the courthouse.
They left, family with people.
Okay, okay. But yeah, and we had some that locked their offices and stuff. And it's kind of hard to bring dogs in to sniff for explosives if your office is locked.
I remember the hours that he's working on that, we agree that we pay for too.
Okay.
So you may want to ask Donnie where we're at, maybe, or Jesse.
But I think our, like the bailiffs and our people need to direct everybody if we want to send them to your, to your building or.
I mean, it's just one of the things that in 12 years up here, we've never had anything happen like that. I mean, it's kind of like the Chiefs win a Super Bowl. It's been 50 years. Hell, we had a tornado, Chiefs won the Super Bowl, Blues won the cup. Things are getting crazy.
Just lost the Super Bowl. Look, that's normal.
It's been, it might be 50 years before they get back. All the Chiefs fans are waiting to rub it in here if I make it that long. Yeah. That is, this is something we need to look at and.
Yeah. Yeah. It, well, otherwise stand behind John and.